Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this December 7th meeting of the City Council. The time is 7:30, and I hereby call this meeting to order. Would you all please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) (inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the breathing and justice for all.
I can't believe this is one of two more meetings we have to close out the year. What a year it's been. Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale, here. Budmats?
Present.
O'Brien?
Here.
Veneziano?
Here.
Bessassi?
Here.
Reyes?
Here.
Soneika?
Here.
With seven present and nobody absent, there is a quorum this evening. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel, as well as our other media outlets. First order of business tonight is to approve minutes from a previous meeting, and there's two sets of minutes to approve tonight. The first set is for the November 16th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Is there a motion to approve this set of minutes?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the minutes for November 16th are approved. This brings us to the second set of minutes, which is for November 23rd, 2021, and it's a City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve this set of minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika. Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the November 23rd City Council meeting minutes are approved. Moving on from approving the previous minutes for the mayor's report, I don't have much to say, other than the holiday celebration last week on December 2nd was phenomenal. What a wonderful event. Good weather, great turnout, a lot of activities. Just want to give a huge thank you to all the volunteers and staff who made that possible. I heard a lot of wonderful remarks from everybody who attended, and I think the weather definitely had something to do with people being a little bit more joyful for that turnout. Are there any ward reports this evening? Alderman O'Brien?
Sure. Thank you. Just a quick update from last night's Economic Development Meeting. It was our last one of the year. Happy to say we did have seven members present, so a quorum was there, and we're looking forward to the two new members, one that's later on the agenda tonight, to join us at our January meeting. There was, the one main topic was, there was a favorable recommendation by a five-to-two vote for a 6B property tax incentive that will be coming to council at one of our few meetings, for an Actuus Solutions on Industrial Avenue. Their supply chain management and logistics company, primarily focused on pinball machines. They're currently based in Huffman Estates. They are looking to move their headquarters to Rolling Meadows here, and would be consolidated, their front offices, as well as their shop, as well into a single location. Right now, they're four full-time employees, they're looking to expand to four to five more, to double in size, and then one part-time employee as well. The rough estimate we were provided for is about $71,000 of improvements they're going to make to the current building, and then, so that will come before us. And then, as we did talk last night, Cook County themselves have the final say on that, but it was a five-to-two in favor of moving forward. And then, we did spend some time talking about our 2022 goals, is we did combine them, or we narrowed it down to three that we'd like to focus on. How to assist existing businesses, attracting new businesses, and aesthetics overall. Communications and community group and marketing involvement was the fourth and fifth ones that we decided were all interlaced, if you're going to be doing stuff to assist new business, or assist existing, and add new businesses. So, we narrowed the listing to three that we'd like to focus on, and then during our January 3rd meeting, we're looking to do a deeper dive on those three goals with key initiatives or proposals we'd like to bring to council sometime in 2022. And there's nothing more definitive than that, we want to bullet point those out and get some ideas on the topic that we'll be working on throughout 2022.
Wonderful, thank you.
Alderman Veneziano, if I missed anything, feel free to chime in.
One thing, we did request, Alderman O'Brien and myself requested that EDC, kind of the update be put on the county meeting for February, so hopefully by then we'll have more information at that meeting with our actual objectives for meeting these goals, that we can give council a better idea of what that committee is working on. That's it.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you both for the update on EDC. Alderman Soneika.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, seeing that this is the first Tuesday of the month, I'm coming from a, I'm sorry, from an environmental committee meeting, so back to back tonight. This was also the last meeting for 2022, and there was a lot of discussion regarding our sustainability plan and our pursuit of stakeholder evaluations. We're looking to have a couple of presentations on January 4th at our regularly scheduled meeting, right after the holiday, to make sure that we're hitting the ground running for 2022. We also discussed our liaisons with Willow Bend Elementary School and their earth club, and making sure that there's RMEC presence at that, at those events. And we're looking forward to bringing a coal tar ban discussion and a draft ordinance for City Council in April, and we're looking to approve that in February. And we also did an evaluation of Public Works' first pumpkin collection event, which was very successful, lots of old pumpkins, lots of individuals participated, so thank you to everyone who made sure that that was a really successful event, and we look forward to presenting that next year as well for the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika. Any other ward reports this evening? Okay, seeing no further ward reports, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, and since there are no signatures on the sign-in sheet, this will bring us to items pending. The first item, line item A, ordinance number 21-67, is to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to a COVID-19 pandemic. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika, is there a second?
Yeah.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes?
Yes.
Soneika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessassi?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance is adopted. This brings us to line item B, it's ordinance number 21-68, and it's to amend the city code regarding the service requirements for special meetings of the City Council of the City of Rolling Meadows. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika, is there a second? Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Budmats?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was looking to amend the item to, I'm looking for the exact wording, sorry, to require in-person service in the event that a Alderman wasn't reachable by mail, or by, or by email, or by telephone. So, if we could change the wording, as I previously sent to you this afternoon?
Sure.
I can read it, if that helps. You got it?
Yep.
Thank you so much. Modifying sentence number three to say that, making a motion to modify the motion by saying that, on sentence number three, that the notice may be delivered to each member of the City Council by email and phone, and if receipt of email is not acknowledged by each member of the City Council, within 24 hours of the time sent, notice shall be sent by personal delivery to those members who have not acknowledged the receipt of such email. The notice shall specify the location, time, and purpose of such meeting.
That way, so, some background, I've been on other Board of Directors where email voting was an issue, and then people would say, oh, I never got the email, and so I'm just trying to avoid it, so that we don't have a situation where any ward might feel like they were underrepresented, or that they weren't given proper notice before a meeting.
Okay. Is there a second to Alderman Budmats' motion?
A second.
Alderman Bessassi? Thank you. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Alderman Bessassi?
Yes, I just want to make sure that the wording...
Microphone, mic.
Oh, sorry. Just want to make sure that the wording that Alderman Budmats has suggested says email or phone call, in all the different places, that, where he stated email.
And Alderman Budmats, I believe, is email and a phone call?
Right, so, there was some discussion, if I were the city clerk, I would want to make a phone call, rather than coming in here to file paperwork necessary to do that, so it makes perfect sense. If I would do it, I would send an email, make a phone call, whatever we can to make sure that everybody's been notified, or at least acknowledged that they've been notified.
Okay. Alderman O'Brien?
No, I was gonna say, I agree, I think that's a good step, is I know we all do the best we can, but let's keep an eye on the emails, or something like that, because I'd rather our officers are on the street, versus knocking on our doors and trying to track us down. But no, I appreciate that idea, and I know we all do the best we can for, when Judy's emails come out, or phone calls come, so that we can keep the officers on the street and make this new deadline, it's a great recommendation, Alderman Budmats.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Thank you, Alderman Budmats, for the suggestion. I know it'll stop my neighbors from being concerned when police officers roll up, quite often this year, but hopefully we shouldn't have as many special meetings. Is there any further discussion on this amendment? Okay, seeing, seeing none, then we'll ask for the clerk to call the roll on the amendment.
Soneika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessassi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the amendment is added. Circling back now to the original with amendment, is there any discussion on this item? No further discussion? Okay, then I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the item as amended.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessassi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Soneika?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance is adopted. This brings us to the next item on the agenda, which are the consent ordinances in for first reading. This consists of three items, and those are items C through E. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent ordinances? Seeing none, the chair declares an order for one motion to consider the ordinances in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Moving on to line item C, ordinance number 21-00 at this time, an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Line item D, ordinance number 21-00, to adopt a salary increase for certain employees of the city of Rolling Meadows, not subject to collective bargaining. And line item E, ordinance number 21-00 at this time, is to amend pay ranges for crossing guard positions for the city of Rolling Meadows. The question is, shall the ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessassi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Soneika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinances will move forward for second reading. This brings us now to new business, it's a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for December 7th of 2021. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano, is there any discussion for the bills on warrant? Okay, seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessassi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Soneika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. This moves us on to the next item on the agenda, which are the consent resolutions. This consists of seven items, those items are G through M. I'm gonna pull line items I and L. Does any Alderman wish to remove any other items from the consent agenda for resolutions? Seeing none, the chair declares an order for one motion to consider the five resolutions in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. Beginning with line item G, resolution number 21-R-118, is to update the current city of Rolling Meadows emergency operations plan. Line item H, resolution number 21-R-119, is to adopt the city of Rolling Meadows pre-disaster recovery plan. Line item J, resolution number 21-R-121, is to award a contract for traffic signal maintenance for 2022. Line item K, resolution number 21-R-1122, is to authorize the purchase of the city's fuel from Relidine Fuel for the remainder of fiscal year 2021 and through December 2022. And finally, line item M, is a resolution number 21-R-124, to approve the purchase of a 2022 Ford Transit in replacement of vehicle RM112/T356 2004 Ford Explorer. The question is, shall those five resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessassi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Soneika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, those resolutions are adopted. Now circling back to line item I, resolution number 21-R-120, to appoint Rob Savo as city manager for the city of Rolling Meadows. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Thank you, Alderman Budmats, thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. I pulled this because I wanted to thank everybody who was involved throughout this entire search and hiring process, specifically the Hiring Committee, for your thorough efforts alongside me when we were reviewing and interviewing the many talented applicants that did come through these doors, and they applied, they were willing, and we did our due diligence. And as you know, I'm sitting up here on the dais, sometimes, most times it's difficult coming to consensus, but I do have to say that I feel very positive with the fact that all eight of us came to a consensus almost simultaneously, and indicated our choice unanimously. And so with that, I'm proud that we're moving forward, and I appreciate the work that everybody did to make this happen, so thank you. Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Bessassi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Soneika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. This brings us to line item L, which is resolution number 21-R-123, and it's to authorize the purchase of water meters for replacements, repairs, and new construction for fiscal year 2022. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika, is there a second? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. I pulled this item for discussion because I'd like to make a motion to postpone this until the December 21st City Council meeting. We do have an upcoming presentation at next week's Committee of the Whole, and I would like the council and staff to have the ability to be made aware of opportunities. This is not with any intention of stifling or stopping any decision here for water meters, I know they're much needed, but I believe that it'll be educational, and I'd like the decision to occur after that. So with that, is there any further discussion on this item? Alderman O'Brien?
Mr. Mayor, I think this might be more of a question for staff, if by delaying, because I know other topics we've delayed, it shouldn't change any of the pricing that's in there now currently, is that correct? Okay.
So I spoke with Director Horn in advance to ensure that, and we will be making the vote by the end of this month, regardless for next year.
Perfect.
Yeah, I wouldn't have requested that if it would have been detrimental to our progress.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien.
Point of order, did you need a second for that motion to postpone?
Did we actually have a motion? I know the mayor requested a motion.
Yeah, and then he had a question, so he answered the question, but I do need a first and a second, to be honest with you.
First.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Veneziano, and thank you, Alderman Soneika, for the second. Is there any further discussion? Because I think I jumped ahead there. All right, well, no further discussion, and the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Postponed.
Or postpone, well, yeah, I'm sorry. Will the resolution be postponed until December 21st?
Reyes?
Yes.
Soneika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessassi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Soneika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessassi?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolution will be postponed. This brings us to other business and reports, and as Alderman O'Brien alluded to earlier, there is an appointment for this evening for the Economic Development Committee, and this is the appointment of Heather Larson, care of Meet Chicago Northwest. Meet Chicago Northwest was in here a couple months ago, providing updates and presentation on the efforts that they do to increase attraction from outside visitors and local visitors to our communities. And I think it's important that we have them participate on our Economic Development Committee, because they have a perspective within their lens that I believe can help our Economic Development Committee develop better economic opportunities. So I very much look forward to Heather's involvement through the Meet Chicago Northwest organization, and this time I'd like to ask for a motion to make the appointment.
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika, thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Soneika?
I just wanted to second the mayor's confidence in Ms. Heather Larson in being on our Economic Development Committee. I also spoke with her individually at several other events, including the Business Showcase 2021 over at the Meridian Banquets, and I think that she has a lot of passion for this area, and in Rolling Meadows in particular, so I'm really excited to have this perspective going forward, and I appreciate Ms. Larson's willingness to volunteer on our committee at the city of Rolling Meadows. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika. Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the appointment of Ms. Heather Larson?
Soneika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessassi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Soneika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolution is adopted. This brings us to line item L, which is resolution number 21-R-123, and it's to authorize the purchase of water meters for replacements, repairs, and new construction for fiscal year 2022. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika, is there a second? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. I pulled this item for discussion because I'd like to make a motion to postpone this until the December 21st City Council meeting. We do have an upcoming presentation at next week's Committee of the Whole, and I would like the council and staff to have the ability to be made aware of opportunities. This is not with any intention of stifling or stopping any decision here for water meters, I know they're much needed, but I believe that it'll be educational, and I'd like the decision to occur after that. So with that, is there any further discussion on this item? Alderman O'Brien?
Mr. Mayor, I think this might be more of a question for staff, if by delaying, because I know other topics we've delayed, it shouldn't change any of the pricing that's in there now currently, is that correct? Okay.
So I spoke with Director Horn in advance to ensure that, and we will be making the vote by the end of this month, regardless for next year.
Perfect.
Yeah, I wouldn't have requested that if it would have been detrimental to our progress.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien.
Point of order, did you need a second for that motion to postpone?
Did we actually have a motion? I know the mayor requested a motion.
Yeah, and then he had a question, so he answered the question, but I do need a first and a second, to be honest with you.
First.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Veneziano, and thank you, Alderman Soneika, for the second. Is there any further discussion? Because I think I jumped ahead there. All right, well, no further discussion, and the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Postponed.
Or postpone, well, yeah, I'm sorry. Will the resolution be postponed until December 21st?
Reyes?
Yes.
Soneika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolution will be postponed. This brings us to other business and reports, and as Alderman O'Brien alluded to earlier, there is an appointment for this evening for the Economic Development Committee, and this is the appointment of Heather Larson, care of Meet Chicago Northwest. Meet Chicago Northwest was in here a couple months ago, providing updates and presentation on the efforts that they do to increase attraction from outside visitors and local visitors to our communities. And I think it's important that we have them participate on our Economic Development Committee, because they have a perspective within their lens that I believe can help our Economic Development Committee develop better economic opportunities. So I very much look forward to Heather's involvement through the Meet Chicago Northwest organization, and this time I'd like to ask for a motion to make the appointment.
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika, thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Soneika?
I just wanted to second the mayor's confidence in Ms. Heather Larson in being on our Economic Development Committee. I also spoke with her individually at several other events, including the Business Showcase 2021 over at the Meridian Banquets, and I think that she has a lot of passion for this area, and in Rolling Meadows in particular, so I'm really excited to have this perspective going forward, and I appreciate Ms. Larson's willingness to volunteer on our committee at the city of Rolling Meadows. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika. Any further discussion?